Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing at 6:27 on that clock anyway. Um, 32, sorry. And seeing as there's no one here, this public hearing is to discuss the library's request for grant for a tax credit. And with no audience, we're gonna close the public hearing. Okay. Meeting for Tuesday, May 29th, for the Board of Selectmen's Order. Please rise, please believe it.
Please believe it to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please ask for approval of minutes from the meetings of May 14th and May 17th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
First electors comments. Um, just a couple of things. Um, we were just talking about a little while ago the fact that our first weekend with the All Parks Pass in effect didn't seem to have any detrimental effect on the town of Madison. Of course, the weather did help, and it looks like next weekend the weather's gonna help again, so we'll see what happens, but we are gonna be keeping an eye on that situation and make sure that it doesn't do that.
How, I'm just curious how backed up this has been.
This had. First electors comments.
Oh, you can't ask this.
You see how he treats me? I'm looking at you, the public.
Yeah, I just talked to the chief and said that there were no problems. The other thing is, I'd just like to make a comment on the fact that we had a really, really nice Memorial Day parade this year. It was well attended. I think everybody was just dying to have a parade since we missed the last two years, so great turnout. The weather was fine, a little sprinkle in the middle, but other than that, it was really nice time. Uh, number four, citizens' comments. Hearing none? I'll move on. Number five, discussing, we're gonna move this meeting along tonight. Discussing to take action to approve a special appropriation request from the E.C. Scranton Memorial Library, the amount of $600,000 for the town's share of preconstruction costs. Funds will be restored to fund downs with the first band issuance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Everybody understand what this is about? Okay. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Number six, discuss to take action to call the annual budget reconciliation town meeting on Tuesday, June 26th, 2018, at 6:30 PM. The town campus room name will prove one. A special appropriation request from the E.C. Scranton Memorial Library, the amount of $600,000 for the town's share of preconstruction costs, and number two, other special appropriations as deemed necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, discuss membership process for the ad hoc academy school guidance committee.
So we have been accumulating names of likely victims.
I got another victim today, by the way.
Okay. And I think Scott and I are proposing that we conduct interviews.
Good.
Make sure that we've got the individuals on board with the possibility, and then, you know, then it would be up to this board to will or field down to.
We'll just come back with a recommendation, I think, to you guys.
So, um, yeah, okay.
So that would be probably at the next?
Yeah, if we're doing it. I think, you know, the idea would be sort of around robin of the interviews, and, you know, for those that either Bruce or I don't know, we'll kind of do it that way. And Tom and I did that for the library ad hoc building committee, and it worked great, and it really did. It got a great community.
Great library building.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I think that's what we're at. Plan for that?
Answered.
Number eight, discuss to take action to approve an application received for the DRS Neighborhood Assistance Tax Credit Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
What do you want to talk about that?
Sure. The Neighborhood Assistance Act provides an opportunity for local businesses, businesses within the state of Connecticut, who owe corporate business tax to the state, to in lieu of that, making a donation to a nonprofit entity, municipality, for energy conservation measures and for other, other things, but primarily energy conservation. And if it's an energy conservation measure, then the taxable entity, the business that makes the donation, receives a tax credit, not deduction, but a full tax credit. So if they donate $50,000 to a nonprofit for energy conservation measures, they'll deduct $50,000 off their taxes. So it costs the entity zero, but provides much-needed funding for, again, both energy conservation and, and other related activities. We're putting in for a Neighborhood Assistance Act grant for the library to help defray the cost of the ground source from the pump system. So whatever money we can get will obviously lower the out-of-pocket we have to put the system in. And, you know, I'd encourage any local businesses to contact us, me, if they're interested in participating. Again, it's at no cost to the business at all. It's money donated and then reimbursed by the state through a tax credit. If you don't owe the state taxes, then, you know, you can participate in this, but any taxpaying business entity can. I think it's great, really, and I really encourage it.
Good. Okay, good. Okay, so any further discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna table number nine until Ryan Duquez gets here, if you want to talk about this. Dave's not even here. Uh, number 10, discuss and take, I'm not gonna say it just until he gets here.
That's what we're moving on to.
Number 10, discuss to take action to approve the town of Madison's complete streets policy.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This is what?
Do you want to talk about this?
This is what. So I believe everybody, this is now up on the website, and I believe everybody has an opportunity to read it and knows a little bit about it, and I just wanted to answer any questions that might have come up between the last meeting and this one.
So we, um, we met with the town, the engineering staff at the county today, Dave Anderson and I, and John and Rob, just to talk about, John had some concerns about the fact that the complete street policy talks about considering it whenever you do anything in town on roads or anything like that. And John was concerned that it might kind of overtake our roads improvement program that we've been working on. So, you know, we talked about it, and we assured him that there's gonna be a priority list of roads where, you know, that would mostly be complete streets, and also that there's another function that we have to do is we're gonna have to come up with a funding source for doing this. So that'll be something we'll talk about Board Finance and Finance Department, because to do these improvements, you know, we're gonna have to have some kind of funding stream. I think it's probably something we want to put in the CIP.
Well, yeah, but in, in many cases, it, it will save money if it's considered right at the beginning.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
For example, the downtown.
Right.
If it was, if pedestrian crosswalks were considered at the beginning of downtown, we wouldn't, so this is the whole reason to have a policy.
Right.
And the state has the same policy, and, uh, what is it, 1% of any funding that you get from the state has to be used toward pedestrian or by facilities, because the state has a complete streets policy.
I didn't know.
Yes, so it's.
We don't use 1% of any money we get from them for, how long has that been effective?
Since 2009.
How long has that been effective?
Since 2009.
Have we ever done that?
It would be.
Not that I'm aware of.
It would be curve cuts, you know, anything that would, yeah, it's.
Would basically bill the state?
I have a, it's.
Pay us already, man. We shouldn't say anything.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take one.
Yeah, so maybe there's a portion of our money that would already be used for some of this.
Right.
So if you, the, the main point is if you consider it at the beginning of something, it's, it's, it's easy. It might just be putting a stripe somewhere else or not, not necessarily, we're not talking about sidewalks everywhere. We're just talking about making some sort of bike, if we can put a bike lane, and before you go and stripe it, and it's not possible to do it, you know? So that's why if we get this going, and I don't think it will slow things down, it doesn't have to be speedy, but maybe if we consider it, if it becomes just a different little mindset. I know we're behind and there's a lot to do, but we'll work together, and hopefully it won't.
Pretty much what we were talking about, working together to make it a, you know.
Yeah. I mean, it is possible. It's been done all over the country since 2004, and it's, it's not, it's not crazy, and every town is different.
And they've got more guidelines and recommendations, too, right? It's not things that you always have to do, right?
No, no. It's based on what you, you know, what you have available and where the priorities are, and it's a joint decision between all the stakeholders, you know? It's not just one, you know, us forcing you to do something. And we are, we're trying to get a lot of input from the town. We have the survey that's on there, and, you know, where people want to go, and whether or not this is a priority. So I think it will, it will be handled well, and I think it will be a good thing if we all work together.
I would like to compliment the authors of this document. The first sentence of this multi-page document, the first sentence is actually the policy. The rest is very, very helpful description about how we change the way we think about designing in the future. And I think there's a lot of good information here and good thoughts that town officials should be taking in mind as we move into the future and design or redesign various parts of the infrastructure of the town. So I think this is a wonderful document, and I appreciate everybody involved in, involved in developing it.
Yes, the one thing I just wanted to comment on was the fact that what we're starting with is a living document, and it's gonna continue to evolve, and, you know, the, the main point of doing it is to start to instill the awareness of people about doing this and incorporating toward the projects.
Yeah, I guess over time, ideally, I'd love to hear some, you know, projects where we've started to use this.
There will be reports back.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And it will be, you know, it will be a continuous thing. There'll always be a liaison between our group and the other works, and, yeah, lots of feedback.
Great.
Great. So, can we motion in a second? Any further discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, discuss to take action to approve a warning to bid for the Tuxus Pond Walkway Improvement Project.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Rob, do you want, are you addressing this, or is it John?
Uh, I guess I, I can. Basically, as part of the $400,000 TOD Transit Oriented Development Grant we received from the state back in 2016, um, we basically broke the project into two phases, the Tuxus Pond Walkway Improvement, as well as the Bradley Road Improvements, that, uh, the interconnectivity between the train station and the Tuxus Pond Walkway. So for the first phase, the Tuxus Pond Walkway, which we anticipate is gonna have a higher proportion of the funding, we recently put out an RFP to qualified consultants, and we recently got those results back, and the consultant that the department has selected is Mylona McBroom for the amount of $45,400, which, for this grant, we have a matching requirement, which is $44,444. It's technically 20%, but the way the OPM applied the percentage, for some reason, it's that odd number. So Mylona McBroom came in right at the amount that we need to our matching requirement. So we previously met with the Board of Finance earlier today to approve the funding from Planning Reserve. So this, the, basically, the design portion will include walkway decking replacements, railing design, as well as any structural repairs required. And actually, one other note, um, there will be some lighting improvements also, which we added late to the RFP. But, uh, yeah, that's pretty much what the, the design will encapsulate. We anticipate having cost estimates for the replacement probably by late June, early July.
So this, this way that we're doing this project is the new model that we have, where we are jobbing it out, and we're limiting our liability on the project. We're bringing in experts, outside experts, to run the projects for us, both from the engineering standpoint and the project manager. Which is number one. All right, so all we're doing right now is awarding the bid. So, any other discussion?
Robert, I'm just clarifying. Part of this project is going to be some improvements. You mentioned lighting as an example. Part of it is simply redoing it.
Resurfacing.
Yeah.
And then replacing the rail.
It's basically rehabilitation where necessary. If they find during the inspection that there are parts that need structural repair, those will be addressed. Obviously, redecking the, the degrading surface, the timber decking that's there, that'll be improved. The consultant will be given some options on different types of decking, and we'll see, we could kind of see composite versus traditional types of decking, what that'll do to the cost, as well as rail, that railing, as you see, if you walk down there, is degrading pretty severely. We're always replacing pickets on it, and it's not visually appealing, at least in my, my opinion, but I've heard that from other citizens as well. So the consultants can propose three different railing alternatives that are gonna be made of different materials, different styles, and we'll be able to choose what railing design we like, and we'll be able to compare costs on that to find optimally the right style of railing for, for the cost available.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Is there anything we've learned about this walkway over the last couple of decades that would cause you to select different materials for the replacement?
I think it would, would, would be nice to find more sustainable materials, but that being said, they have lasted 25-plus years, so I think, I think they did withstand their service life. It wasn't like a failure or degradation over a five or 10-year span. They have lasted, I think that was built in like '96, so it, they have lasted a while. But that being said, with the way construction's done now, and different type of materials available, it will be worth looking at some different types of possibly composite things we could do. It'll also be a function of the grant money and the cost, so we'll weigh that when we get the estimates.
The other thing I think we're gonna be looking at is some how to make a vandal for, because we've had a lot of vandals in there.
Yeah. Thanks, Rob.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Number 12, discuss to take action to approve funding the town's portion of grant matching funds from the Planning Reserve for the Tuxus Pond Walkway Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is gonna be coming from the.
Planning Reserve. Does this matter been discussed at all with the Salt Metal Park Oversight Group?
Turn around the next.
I'm sorry.
Turn around the next one.
Oh. Oh, we're one above there. I'm sorry.
No problem. I'll bring it, I'll relay you, don't worry. Okay, so any further discussion on number 12? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, number 13, discuss to take action to approve the engineering study contract for Salt Metal Park.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So Rob, Rob or John's?
Uh, I can address this. I have a number of notes here. I tried to catch up. John and myself, neither of us were really involved from this, this project's inception as far as the design of the park and the environmental permitting and remediation that was done. But from my understanding, we received a DECD grant, and from that grant, as part of that grant, there's an agreement, there was an agreement that the town would enter a voluntary remediation program to address any type of remediation associated with the former Brizworld Airport. So basically, in short, all the environmental testing and remediation work that was done to finally close out the DECD grant that we were, we were granted back in, I think, 11, 2011, 2012, and in order to officially close this out, the DECD requires a verification report, which is a prepared document, which includes basically all of the tests, mapping, anything that was associated with the remediation, all of that included into one organized verified, verification report, which verifies the site, meets the requirements, and we could properly put an end and close out the project. So I think with the approval of using Woodin and Kern, who's been the consultant throughout the process, we could get this, get this squared away, and then finally exit the voluntary remediation program. So the, the cost for the final report is like $18,000. It would be $18,000 for the final report. Since this is a voluntary program and we're, we're a municipality, there's a very, very small chance that the report will be audited. If it is, if there is an audit required, there may be some small additional funding, full disclosure, but the likelihood of that is, I've been told, is extremely low, and I think with this 18K, we could close this out.
Yeah, we use Woodin and Kern through this whole process from the beginning, and so to try to find somebody else to do this final phase, it would probably cost us three times as much, just because they have to go back over everything that's been done, or you know, we're kind of picking up on tail ends, so.
Is the 18K funded at this point? So it's incremental?
That's the next item on the agenda.
Ah, reel me in. Love that.
Okay, any further discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Number 14, discuss to take action to approve funding the engineering study for Salt Metal Park.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so like I said, this is approximately $18,000, and is it also gonna come from the Planning Reserve?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, before we, before we move forward, I'm gonna go back to number nine. Discuss to take action to approve the tax incentive policy recommended by the Economic Development Commission. Ryan Duquez is here, the chair of the EDC, he's gonna address this.
So you probably remember about.
Yeah, we need to move it in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
About two months ago, David Anderson and I came to the Board of Selectmen to discuss the tax incentive policy, and at that time, we presented you with a draft of that policy. It's been updated since then. I think that you'll find the, the major components of the updates to be even more in favor for the Board of Selectmen in terms of not, not having to make any major decisions without a town meeting, which is, which is required under state statute. We did a little bit of research on that. So essentially, just in summary, the policy provides guidelines, which are governed by state statute, to help potential commercial developers kind of qualify for a potential phased-in new tax on their assessed property. As we mentioned during our, our visit a couple of months ago, this doesn't take any money away from the town, it doesn't reduce the size of the pie of our grant list in, in any scenario. It is only on the growth of that. In other words, when a developer is planning a property and there's an assessed value of, say, $100,000, this would be only on the incremental increase in the assessed property. So if it went to $200,000, that additional $100,000 could be phased in up to five years. This is already allowed under state statute. These requests would be made on an individual basis to the Board of Selectmen, which would then go to town meeting. What we have this kind of hope to do through EDC is to provide some kind of, some curbs to that process, not that somebody could still come and make a request outside of this policy, but this policy kind of sets some potential guidelines of what we are looking for in that arena to help encourage development. And again, it's commercial development, we favor commercial development that has the potential to create jobs as well, and again, these are just guidelines, they're, they're not written in stone.
Great, thank you. Anyone have any questions or discussion?
All right, I continue to think it's a great idea. How will town officials determine what's an appropriate amount to award under this?
Um, so it's not necessarily, the, I guess the, the, the award would be kind of the phase-in period, and I think that it, it could be anywhere from maybe three to five years, and I think that some of that would come from the, you know, how many checkboxes an application might be checking off. So if they're creating a lot of jobs, if the, if the commercial development is extremely desirable, and I think that that would kind of be a process that would go through the planning office and perhaps a little bit of coordination with EDC before being brought to the Board of Selectmen and then to town meeting.
State statute imply any parameters, any limits on the range of what this can be?
Uh, there are, there are specific types of, of development that are, are not, do not qualify, and such as, you know, single-family housing, for example, does not qualify under state statute, is, is certainly not something that we would be interested in either. But the state statute, which I believe we provided, we have to send out again, does provide some guidelines to that effect, so there, there are some things that do not qualify already.
Ryan, did they, did they suggest the 175, or is that something that you guys came?
That was, that was something that we kind of came up with as a kind of an initial benchmark. We certainly want to encourage development that's worthwhile to our grant list, and also maybe dissuade some people from coming forward with something that might be a $20,000 incremental grant list. Not that those aren't important, but there is paperwork involved and a town meeting involved.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ball in favor?
Aye.
Thanks a lot, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Number 15, oh yeah, they're discussing to take action to approve the resignation of Chris Wiler from the Economic Development Commission.
So moved with our gratitude.
Second.
He's not quitting because of this, is he?
He's moving, right?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Discuss to take action to approve line item transfers, totally $2,175.
So moved.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we gotta shift it.
Tax abatements and refunds in the amount of $2,205.44.
So moved.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
We should give him a hug. We're too quick.
So, anyone wanna make a motion about executive session?
Uh, move that we go into executive session to discuss a potential lease negotiation. We'd like to invite into executive session the Town Council, and we have three members of the Board of Finance here, or do we have two?
Two.
Two members of the Board of Finance that we'd like to invite in as well.
Ken Kowinski and Gene Fitzgerald. Floyd Dugus, Ken Kowinski, Gene Fitzgerald, and is anybody else?
You thought, because I was coming.
Jude, Jude said she was coming.
She, yeah, she was gonna try.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Ball in favor? 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 Ball in favor?
Aye.
There's something I had to do. Number twenty, citizens' comments.
I'd just like, Rosalind Fainey, I'd just like to ask a question about who I would speak to. I spoke with the police department about the vandalism that's happening at Academy School. We picked up the picnic tables twice this weekend, and somebody threw a bike rack down into the well. My concern there was that while it's down in the well, there's an arm sticking out. Any child running by can get hurt, so I asked to have that removed. Would we speak to building maintenance? Who am I speaking to?
I thought they were taking it out already, but I've already spoken to the police about the vandalism.
And then they also broke where the sign, the front.
Yeah, so, what amazes me about these things is that what they're doing takes a lot of strength.
Yeah.
So these are, these are very strong people who are vandalizing downtown, not just, not just there, but...
Is it all of downtown, or is it just like...
We've had incidents over Tuxus Pond, we've had incidents around downtown, and so...
So are the police patrol, like, sitting there for hours?
What they did was they've done an analysis of the reports that they've gotten from people, and they've determined the likelihood of one of the events are happening, I'm not going to talk in many specifics, but they're increasing controls.
Okay, and the other...
I hate to answer the public comments, but that's one of those things we've...
Sorry, I know, I was supposed to say, the other question is, as far as the committee, was there an application that was supposed to be put out to be part of this committee?
It's a secret lottery.
That's what we're worried about.
You guys got to the meeting a little late, we've already covered the agenda item, but Scott and I, with the input from the board, we've started to accumulate a list of names, and Scott and I will be reaching out to people shortly for interviews, and then from there we'll come back to the Board of Selectmen with recommendations.
Catherine, no, I was here for that part, and I understood what you said. I guess our question is, how were those names submitted? Where did they come from?
Okay, so since we've completely broken the rule of...
People have reached out to us directly, I think, in most cases.
Well, it's a little bit of both, but we've also been looking around the community, at the stakeholders in the community, so we've been purposely trying to identify all of the groups in town that are natural stakeholders in this, so the Save Academy Group, the Historic Society, the, yep, the Deacon John Graves, Historic District Commission, we're looking for, I think, somebody in the business community, so we consider the businesses, the downtown businesses, to be a stakeholder in this conversation as well. So, and that's not meant, that's not intended to be the final list of stakeholders, but just to give you a sense of how we're thinking about it.
There's still a proactive, I mean, people reached out to me even today to get their list, so there's no super-secret list either, if people are interested.
So if they wanted it to be considered, they would just email?
Yeah, yep, yep.
All right.
The list is still open.
Okay, and I've also added everyone to the list that said during public comment that they've wanted to be included, so if you give a public comment with someone you have, you're on the list.
Catherine Verante, seventy-one Cox Road, in public comment, I'd like to add my name to the list, Lauren, thanks.
Catherine Hutcherson, thirty-one Scotland, can we get a copy of the charge that was passed? I looked online and I saw the meeting minutes, but I didn't see the charge that was passed by motion at the last meeting. Also, are we, is the public, or are you waiting for the committee to receive the information of the three of the four developers who have submitted building-only proposals? We're very interested, as you might imagine.
We haven't seen that, we haven't, it hasn't come before the board yet, so...
Okay, somebody, was it Dave?
So, no, I know, I mean, I've...
They're in the building, but we haven't seen them yet.
Oh, okay. Any chance they're going to be made public?
I'm sure they will be, of course, yeah.
Okay, yes, we'd love to see what they look like.
Same.
Okay. A couple of comments here. Terry, vandalizer. To dovetail off of some of the other comments about vandalism that's been going down at the academy, you know that there have been a lot of people here who have put a lot of muscle and time and effort into making that building look much better than it has over the last several years, a lot of sweat equity and even our own personal money, which, you know, when we have discussions here about making improvements to things like the walkway around Tuxus Pond, and you have the presentation saying, well, we need a new deck, okay, great, we're considering just, you know, replacing it with a wooden deck, and then, and then one of the Board of Selectmen says, can we do something like AZAC or something like that? Well, wait a minute, that increases the cost, you know, six times that, and now we've got a building downtown on Main Street that has been there for years and has not been maintained by the town, and we can't get a nickel or a dime to keep it going, to even look presentable? Why can't we not have, you know, cold-circuit cameras to protect the property that belongs to the town and every single member of this town? So that's a big question. I also have a question about number nine, number nine on this agenda, which was the discussion about the tax incentive policy recommended by the Economic Development Commission. A gentleman's comment in the second row, and I don't know his name, he made the comment that a donation of money to the town would then be deducted by that business as taxes owed to the state. So if that option is available to businesses, would it be available to individuals? Could we make a donation to the town, and then it would cut our taxes that we have to pay to the state? If no, why not? That's actually what the state of New York is doing. It's because of the tax reform, so to speak, on a federal level, where they're capping the private deductions to ten thousand dollars for your property taxes and your itemized deductions for property taxes and state and local taxes, to ten thousand dollars. So what, what New York is doing is, New York is saying, you can make a donation to the state.
It's something like that.
Sure.
That's really funny. That was my wife, my...
Get her, Joe.
So what New York has proposed, and you've probably heard about it, is individuals can make a donation to the state, and they can reduce their own personal taxes that way. Well, this is what a proposal is for businesses in this town, but not for private individuals. So how would that then, how would that play out? If it's not available to private citizens but just to businesses, why? Secondly, if businesses, by making a donation, reduce their tax payments to the state, won't that then overall reduce tax revenues to the state and hence to the town? And does that now place a bigger burden on every individual, again, to replace those revenues from your pocket, from my pocket, and all of our pockets, but businesses get a tax break and we don't?
I'm going to speak to that in my comments, because that's, because EDC is violating it, so.
And then my third point was, and you may have read my little letter to the editor in the source, but I'm very concerned about the fact that when we had the vote on budget on May fifteenth, and we had tornado conditions that killed several people in the state, that we still didn't do anything to maximize the ability of people to exercise their right to vote on something as significant as a budget. Now, there are a lot of people in this town who have a lot of money, and there are a lot of people who don't. I know people who can't even afford the internet because they don't have the money So budget is critical, as you know, a fair vote is always critical in a polling democracy. And my concern is, how did we end up on a day that was severe weather, historically severe for the state, having the result of nearly, not quite, a half-half split, a fifty-seven, forty-three split? We obviously had people who couldn't make it to vote up at Brown, and my next-door neighbor went to vote at Brown, and there were two men that were banging on the windows because, you know, they lost power, and it looked like the building was closed, no one was there, if anyone, you know, risked their life to make it to the voting booth, they wouldn't even know if there was anyone in there to place their vote, if they were willing to risk their life. Why did we not continue to vote on another day, say, a week later? Is that an option? Is it a legal option? If not, why not? The budget is important, we should have every individual's ability, you know, within a reasonable expectation, something as severe as that weather. What if it was March seventh, nor Easter, where we had all those trees come down? What if the vote went the other way, and the town didn't pass, and the school budget didn't pass? What then? Would you push the vote to another week, two weeks later? You didn't have power. Are those votes electronically processed? If they were electronically processed, how could you come out with a result basically an hour and a half after voting closed when there was no power in the building?
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no more public comment, liaison reports to selectmen comments. Who wants to go first?
I will, because I have nothing. How's that? Excellent.
Okay, so I'll take a stab. With regards to some of the input we've had on this tax incentive program, I'm not sure what part of Ryan's presentation you're referring to, but let me make sure that I frame what this policy is. This is simply codifying in town policy state statute that already exists, so any business could come in prior to this policy and request tax exemptions because of economic development activities, for instance. They were to build a factory on a piece of land and improve the value of the land significantly and/or add a significant number of jobs in Madison. The town could consider an abatement strategy with them. The limit to that is ten years, and what happens within those ten years, we can do kind of whatever we want. This document is trying to put some structure around all of that and bring transparency to the process of ultimately having a go-to-town meeting for disposition. So the example is of a company moves into town and creates twenty jobs and improves and/or improves their property by more than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. They would continue to pay property taxes on the value of the land as it was the day that they, that they acquired it, and they could defer some of the incremental, the incremental value over a period of years. So if they were to improve the property, let's say it was a hundred thousand dollars in, in property tax revenues to the town, new, additional above what it was creating before, they might pay ten percent of that, a hundred thousand in the first year, twenty percent of that hundred thousand in the second year, thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent, all the way on, and so by year ten, they're paying a hundred percent of the incremental increase to property tax value. So there is no charitable contribution portion to this. Further, this is a completely discretionary program, so the town, the Board of Selectmen, and then the Board of Finance, and ultimately the town meeting, but the Board of Selectmen can decide not to allow a tax incentive for a business that were to move into town. And as Ryan said, the state statute dictates the types of activities that become eligible for this, so building a new residential housing development would not qualify under any circumstance. It wouldn't, wouldn't qualify under state statute, so it would be eligible for consideration by us. If Clarity wanted to buy five acres in North Madison and put up a multimillion-dollar facility, that would qualify, and we might consider something like that. Again, if that five acres was generating twenty-five thousand dollars in property value, that we would still get, so there would be no net decrease to the town, we would just be slowing down the rate of increase over a period of up to ten years. We could say three years, we could say five years, we have that discretion in this document. So there is no charitable pre-giving to defer tax liability. The, the model of us all being able to charitably donate our property, our property tax money to the town in order to circumvent IRS regulations is, I believe, that the State General Assembly has paved the way for this. In theory, I'm not sure if the governor has approved it. I do know the IRS has, has weighed in on this topic and said categorically, don't get cute with us, we're not going to allow this, so...
We'll decide what's acceptable.
Right, so, but they, but they are in no way related, so if you heard Ryan talking about that, either he misspoke or wasn't clear, but, but this tax incentive is purely an economic development tool that we can use at our discretion to entice a business, maybe they're considering moving to Guilford. We have something here now that we can go and sweeten the pot and maybe, and maybe sway them to move to Madison. And again, that would be for a business that we wanted, so hopefully that, that clears that up.
Yeah, my apologies, it wasn't Ryan, it was the gentleman who was here.
Yeah, it was, it was someone with tax credit.
Oh, that was for the geothermal.
Oh, the geothermal.
So you just spent fifteen minutes talking about something.
Really?
Well, but...
She did mention number nine. But number nine was, okay, so number nine was the economic tax incentive.
She's supposed to do it.
Okay, okay. So what do you, just getting free money for us, that's, there's nothing wrong with The Board of Education.
Bring it home.
I reported...
I'm trying to report it, man.
I had reported the Board of Education was having a tough year with their special education spending we've all received now. Their official ask, they're seeking a, an eighty-two thousand dollar special appropriation out of the Special Ed Reserve Fund, so I expect that will show up on our agenda rather quickly. Ready?
For the regulation, it will go to the Board of Finance, their next...
Their next?
...release, so the fund's out of the reserve fund.
So it doesn't come through the Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
Okay, so there are special appropriations.
Look at that, that we don't need you. It's not a, the money's already set aside in a reserve fund, it's not coming out of a budget.
Okay, and their kindergarten enrollment numbers are tracking, as I've reported, about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-one kids. They forecasted a hundred and thirty-eight, so in the world of figuring out how many kids you're going to have at school, that's bullseye.
How many are graduating this year?
Over three hundred.
I have one of them.
And the first wave of, the first wave of the small classes hits next year in ninth grade.
Okay. No?
The three town pension boards held their regular quarterly meeting, and the pension board members are satisfied with the performance of the various portfolios.
Great, that's a great report.
That's the lead one reports.
Planning and zoning, other than the fact that it was about a three-hour meeting, I made it through two and three-quarter hours. There were four applications that went, that were presented, probably the two significant ones, the use of the special exception use of the Madison Earth Care property by the library was approved, so that's all set there. And the ongoing reinventures, the application for the special exception permit to build a thirty-seven, two-bedroom residential townhome group, some retail offices and a marina, all of the parties presented, everybody presented, and I think that the, I don't want to speak for the, for the board, but I think they were pretty favorable, but the biggest issue there is the coastal site plan required, and the DEEP is just killing them, this continues, even though they claimed that they had letters to dispute a lot of things or address the issues, it just seems to be coming back. So that's, at this point, that's still, still on hold, or still in, in process. I think the PNC were going to, they were going to do another walk through the property just to understand what, you know, DEEP's concerns were. Their feeling is they have satisfied most of those requirements, but yet DEEP is not letting them on the platters, so, that's it.
Anything else to comment on the voting in the election, sort of referendum? Fact of the matter is, this year, eleven point nine percent of the people took out the vote, last year, nine point two percent did. Twenty sixteen, fourteen point oh five percent did, and in twenty fifteen, eleven point seven, so we don't have traditionally high turnouts anyway. Secondly, the storm really hit between five and eight, so voting was open all day long, there were no problems getting there. When the power went out at Brown, we heard people in this room, one of our last meetings, that the custodians were being thanked for turning their car lights on so people knew that they could get into the building. Seventy-five people voted by paper ballot after power went out, and they were able to count those by hand. They brought the machines down here and plugged them in, and they spit out their lists just like they would have up there. So everything was a...
So everything was above board, everything was, I actually give everybody a lot of credit who dealt with the situation that day. What came through Madison that afternoon, we believe, was tornado that cut a line across the northern part of town, blocking seven roads in the time that it took to get through here, which was about 20 minutes, and causing, you know, a lot of, a lot of problems and a lot of consternation, all of which I think was dealt with pretty well. The reason why the tower went out at Brown was that when it came across, it also went down behind Brown and took out some trees that took down the main line. That's why they had no power there. But all in all, I think, I think it was handled very well. And by the way, all elections are covered by state law. So the town has no discretion as to how they deal with these things. And other than that, I don't have any amazing thoughts, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.